நாங்கள் நிறைவாய்ப் பெற்றுக்கள் வந்துருக்கிறோம் அண்டவரே
நாங்கள் நிறைவாய்ப் பெற்றுக்கள் வந்துருக்கிறோம் அண்டவரே அகினாலே உம்மட சாமுகத்தில் நாங்கள் கேட்கின்றோம்.
அகினாலே உம்மட சாமுகத்தில் நாங்கள் கேட்கின்றோம்.
இந்த நால் மாலைக்கொட்டத்தை நீர் ஆசிர்வதித் தாரும்.
இந்த நால் மாலைக்கொட்டத்தை நீர் ஆசிர்வதித் தாரும்.
இந்த கொட்டத்துக்குளமாய் அனேகர் ஆசிர்வதிக்கப்பட தயவு செய்யும்.
இந்த கொட்டத்துக்குளமாய் அனேகர் ஆசிர்வதிக்கப்பட தயவு செய்யும்.
உம்மடே வார்த்தை கொடுக்கிற உம்மடி அடியானே பலப்படுத்தும்.
உம்மடே வார்த்தை கொடுக்கிற உம்மடி அடியானே பலப்படுத்தும்.
நீர் பேசும்.
நீர் பேசும். இந்த நாலிலே இங்களிடே தேவை
இந்த நாலிலே இங்களிடே தேவை உம்மடி அடியானும் மூலமாய் நிறைவேற்றுவேண்டுமாறு சபிக்கிறோம்.
உம்மடி அடியானும் மூலமாய் நிறைவேற்றுவேண்டுமாறு சபிக்கிறோம். அண்டவரே உம்மடே வார்த்தை கொடுக்கிற அடியானே
அண்டவரே உம்மடே வார்த்தை கொடுக்கிற அடியானே நீர் உம்மடே பர்ஸுத்தாவின் நிறப்போ.
நீர் உம்மடே பர்ஸுத்தாவின் நிறப்போ.
பர்ஸுத்த ஆப்பேனருடிய அனுக்கிறத்தை நாங்கள் ஓனர தயவு செய்யும்.
பர்ஸுத்த ஆப்பேனருடிய அனுக்கிறத்தை நாங்கள் ஓனர தயவு செய்யும்.
கத்தாவே உம்மடே நோக்கங்களை நிறைவேற்றும்.
கத்தாவே உம்மடே நோக்கங்களை நிறைவேற்றும்.
நீர் அனிப்பிய ஒழிய கரெக்ளா அண்டவரே
நீர் அனிப்பிய ஒழிய கரெக்ளா அண்டவரே
அவருகு மூலமாய் எங்களுக்கு நீர் எந்த வார்த்தை கொடுக்க விரும்பிகிறரோ அதே இந்த மாலைவெளிலே எங்களுக்கு தாரும்.
அவருகு மூலமாய் எங்களுக்கு நீர் எந்த வார்த்தை கொடுக்க விரும்பிகிறரோ அதே இந்த மாலைவெளிலே எங்களுக்கு தாரு.
சத்தரிவினுடிய சதிதித்தங்களை நச்சனாகி ஏசி கிருசனாமத்தினாலே நாங்கள் கடிந்து பொழுக்கிறோம்.
சத்தரிவினுடிய சதிதித்தங்களை நச்சனாகி ஏசி கிருசனாமத்தினாலே நாங்கள் கடிந்து பொழுக்கிறோம்.
உம்மடே வார்த்தை சுவாதைநமாய் இந்த மாலைவெளிலே
உம்மடே வார்த்தை சுவாதைநமாய் இந்த மாலைவெளிலே
காணப்பட கர்த்தர் கிருபை செய்விட்டுமாறு நாங்கள் சபிக்கிறோம்.
காணப்பட கர்த்தர் கிருபை செய்விட்டுமாறு நாங்கள் சபிக்கிறோம்.
வரவேண்டிய உம்மடிப்பிளைகளை துரிதமாய் கொண்டுவாரும் தடைகளை நீக்கிப்போரு.
வரவேண்டிய உம்மடிப்பிளைகளை துரிதமாய் கொண்டுவாரும் தடைகளை நீக்கிப்போரு.
அண்டவரே
அண்டவரே
இந்த கடசினாட்கிலே உம்மடே வார்த்தைக்குக்குட பஞ்சங்க பஞ்சம் மருமின்று சொலப்பட்டுருக்கிறது.
இந்த கடசினாட்கிலே உம்மடே வார்த்தைக்குக்குட பஞ்சங்க பஞ்சம் மருமின்று சொலப்பட்டுருக்கிறது.
பஞ்சத்திலே மிக கொடிதான பஞ்சம்.
பஞ்சத்திலே மிக கொடிதான பஞ்சம்.
உம்மடே வார்த்தையை கேட்கக்கூடிய பஞ்சம் மிக விரைவில வர இருப்பதினாலே
உம்மடே வார்த்தையை கேட்கக்கூடிய பஞ்சம் மிக விரைவில வர இருப்பதினாலே
எங்களுக்கு கிடைத்த நல்ல தர்ண்யத்தை நாங்கள் நல்ல முறிலே பயன்படித்துப் பல்லை
எங்களுக்கு கிடைத்த நல்ல தர்ண்யத்தை நாங்கள் நல்ல முறிலே பயன்படித்துப் பல்லை
உம்மட ரத்தத்தினால மீக்கப்பட்ட பிளைகளுக்கு தயவு செய்யும்.
உம்மட ரத்தத்தினால மீக்கப்பட்ட பிளைகளுக்கு தயவு செய்யும்.
அண்டவரே இந்த
அண்டவரே இந்த
ஜகோஷமால் இருந்து அறிகிலை சுற்றிருக்கிற ஒப்பொருடு காகனால் ஜபிக்கிறோம்.
ஜகோஷமால் இருந்து அறிகிலை சுற்றிருக்கிற ஒப்பொருடு காகனால் ஜபிக்கிறோம்.
கர்த்தர் கிருபை செய்விட்டுமாறு அவரோடின் இடைபடவிட்டுமாறு சபிக்கிறோம்.
கர்த்தர் கிருபை செய்விட்டுமாறு அவரோடின் இடைபடவிட்டுமாறு சபிக்கிறோம்.
அண்டவரே அறிகில் இருந்தாலும்
அண்டவரே அறிகில் இருந்தாலும்
வர நல்ல சந்தர்ப்பங்கள் வாகனங்கள் இருந்தாலும்
வர நல்ல சந்தர்ப்பங்கள் வாகனங்கள் இருந்தாலும்
வீட்டில் இருந்து
வீட்டில் இருந்து
ஆன்லைன் மூலமாய் உம்மடே வார்த்தை கேட்காதபடி சக்கத்தர் ஒருமைத்து
ஆன்லைன் மூலமாய் உம்மடே வார்த்தை கேட்காதபடி சக்கத்தர் ஒருமைத்து
உம்மடே வீட்டில் வந்து வார்த்தை கேட்கக்கூடிய பாக்கத்தைத் தாரு.
உம்மடே வீட்டில் வந்து வார்த்தை கேட்கக்கூடிய பாக்கத்தைத் தாரு.
நாங்கள் தூரத்திலிருந்து உம்மடே வார்த்தை கேட்காதபடி
நாங்கள் தூரத்திலிருந்து உம்மடே வார்த்தை கேட்காதபடி
பர்ஸுத்தவான்களோட அம்மருந்து உம்மடே வார்த்தை கேட்கக்கூடிய பாக்கத்தை எங்கள் அனைவருக்கும் தாரு.
பர்ஸுத்தவான்களோட அம்மருந்து உம்மடே வார்த்தையை கேட்கக்கூடிய பாக்கத்தை எங்கள் அனைவருக்கும் தாரு.
இந்த கடசினாட்கிலே
இந்த கடசினாட்கிலே
அண்டவரே நீர்தாமி உம்மடிப்பிளைகளோடு பேசும்.
அண்டவரே நீர்தாமி உம்மடிப்பிளைகளோடு பேசும்.
சபைக்கூடி வருதற்போது
சபைக்கூடி வருதற்போது
சபையை நிகழ்ச்சிக்கு முக்கியத்தை கொடுக்க உம்மடிப்பிளைகளுக்கு அவர்களோடு நீர் பேசும் அண்டவரே.
சபையை நிகழ்ச்சிக்கு முக்கியத்தை கொடுக்க உம்மடிப்பிளைகளுக்கு அவர்களோடு நீர் பேசும் அண்டவரே.
இந்த நாலிலே உம்மட அடியான் நீண்டத் தொலைவிலிருந்து
இந்த நாலிலே உம்மட அடியான் நீண்டத் தொலைவிலிருந்து
சென்னைக்கு முதல் தரமாக நவோல் பேமிலா அண்டவரே.
சென்னைக்கு முதல் தரமாக நவோல் பேமிலா அண்டவரே.
சைலஸ் பாம்மா அவரே மனவியை இருவருக்காகனால் ஜபிக்கிறோம்.
சைலஸ் பாம்மா அவரே மனவியை இருவருக்காகனால் ஜபிக்கிறோம்.
நீண்டத் தொலைவிலே இருந்து எதிர்பாரைத் திவிதமாக
நீண்டத் தொலைவிலே இருந்து எதிர்பாரைத் திவிதமாக
அண்டவரே அவர்களோடு பாரத்தை சென்னைப்பக்கமாய்ந்து தீர்ப்புனது காகன்னட்டுச் செலுத்திக்கிறோம்.
அண்டவரே அவர்களோடு பாரத்தை சென்னைப்பக்கமாய்ந்து தீர்ப்புனது காகன்னட்டுச் செலுத்திக்கிறோம்.
அண்டவரே ஜகோஷமாக்கு அவர்கள் முதல் முறையாக வந்துருக்கிறார்களா அண்டவரே
அண்டவரே ஜகோஷமாக்கு அவர்கள் முதல் முறையாக வந்துருக்கிறார்களா அண்டவரே
அவர்களுக்கான்னு பாரத்தை நீர் குடுத்தது காகன்னட்டுச் செலுத்திக்கிறோம்.
அவர்களுக்கான்னு பாரத்தை நீர் குடுத்தது காகன்னட்டுச் செலுத்திக்கிறோம்.
இந்த நாலிலே அவர்களும் மூலமாக எங்களுக்கு வேண்டிய வார்த்தை நீர் தரவேண்டுமாறு மண்டலாடுகிறோம்.
இந்த நாலிலே அவர்களும் மூலமாக எங்களுக்கு வேண்டிய வார்த்தை நீர் தரவேண்டுமாறு மண்டலாடுகிறோம்.
கத்தாவே பாடுகிற பாடலுகள் செய்தி
கத்தாவே பாடுகிற பாடலுகள் செய்தி
முடிவு மட்டமாய் உம்மட கரம் இங்களோடு இருக்கவிட்டுமாறு சபிக்கிறோம்.
முடிவு மட்டமாய் உம்மட கரம் இங்களோடு இருக்கவிட்டுமாறு சபிக்கிறோம்.
ஒரு பெற்றுக்களோ உம்மட நாமத்தேமாய் படித்துக்கொள்ளோம்.
ஒரு பெற்றுக்களோ உம்மட நாமத்தேமாய் படித்துக்கொள்ளோம்.
குதி, கன மகிமை உம்மக்கே அண்டவரே
குதி, கன மகிமை உம்மக்கே அண்டவரே
எங்கள் கர்த்தரும் அருமை ரச்சகருமாக ஏசி கிருசனாமத்தில்
எங்கள் கர்த்தரும் அருமை ரச்சகருமாக ஏசி கிருசனாமத்தில்
ஸ்தோத்துரத்தோடு எங்கள் விணப்பங்களை கொண்டுவருகிறோம் நல்லா அண்டவரே. ஆமேன்.
ஸ்தோத்துரத்தோடு எங்கள் விணப்பங்களை கொண்டுவருகிறோம் நல்லா அண்டவரே. ஆமேன்.
பாடல் நம்பர் 61. பாடல் நம்பர் 61. 61. தேவனே நிருதியம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது நான் பாடிக்கிறதல் மிதுவே. என் மகிமை பாரு. 61. தேவனே நிருதியம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது நான் பாடிக்கிறதல் மிதுவே. என் மகிமை பாரு.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
நான் பாடிக்கிறதல் பன்னுவே என் மகிமயும் பாடும்.
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 வீனையே சூரமர்தலமே பிழியோங்கள் அதிகாலை விழிப்பே.
வீனையே சூரமர்தலமே பிழியோங்கள் அதிகாலை விழிப்பே.
பிழியோங்கள் அதிகாலை வெறிப்பே.
பிழியோங்கள் அதிகாலை வெறிப்பே.
கர்த்தாவே ஜனங்களுக்குளே கர்த்தாவே ஜனங்களுக்குளே உம்மை நான் தொதிப்பே.
கர்த்தாவே ஜனங்களுக்குளே கர்த்தாவே ஜனங்களுக்குளே உம்மை நான் தொதிப்பே.
உம்மை நான் தொதிப்பே.
உம்மை நான் தொதிப்பே.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
நான் பாடிக்கிறதல் பன்னுவே என் மகிமயும் பாடும்.
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 அதிகளுக்குளே உம்மை அதிகளுக்குளே உம்மை.
அதிகளுக்குளே உம்மை அதிகளுக்குளே உம்மை.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
நான் பாடிக்கிறதல் பன்னுவே என் மகிமயும் பாடும்.
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 தீருவை வானர்த்தே எலாக ஏசி விருதே.
தீருவை வானர்த்தே எலாக ஏசி விருதே.
எலாக ஏசி விருதே.
எலாக ஏசி விருதே.
தக்கீயும் விருமதலே தக்கீயும் விருமதலே.
தக்கீயும் விருமதலே தக்கீயும் விருமதலே.
பரியத்தம் வேகம் இருது பரியத்தம் வேகம் இருது.
பரியத்தம் வேகம் இருது பரியத்தம் வேகம் இருது.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
நான் பாடிக்கிறதல் பன்னுவே என் மகிமயும் பாடும்.
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 தேவனே வானர்த்தே எலாக ஓய்யத்திரு.
தேவனே வானர்த்தே எலாக ஓய்யத்திரு.
எலாக ஓய்யத்திரு.
எலாக ஓய்யத்திரு.
உம்மாகிமயுது இரஞ்சி உம்மாகிமயுது இரஞ்சி.
உம்மாகிமயுது இரஞ்சி உம்மாகிமயுது இரஞ்சி.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
தேவனே என்னிருதயம் ஆயத்தமா இருக்கிறது.
நான் பாடிக்கிறதல் பன்னுவே என் மகிமயும் பாடும்.
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 724. பாடல் நம்பர் 724. 724. பாடல் நம்பர் 724. தெலுகு 739. தெலுகு 739. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே. தெலுகு 739. தெலுகு 739. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே. கிருஷ்ண ஏசு வரிகிறார். ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே. 724. 724. தெலுகு 739. கிருஷ்ண ஏசு வரிகிறார். ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே. 724. 724. தெலுகு 739.
ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. சுதந்தரித்து கொள்ளுவார்கள் எல்லாவற்ற யுமி. சுதந்தரித்து கொள்ளுவார்கள் எல்லாவற்ற யுமி. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. 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 திரும்பி வருவேன்னு தம்சீசரோடு ரைத்தா. திரும்பி வருவேன்னு தம்சீசரோடு ரைத்தா. இடத்தையாயத்தம் சிங்கி என்னோடு இருக்கேயுது. இடத்தையாயத்தம் சிங்கி என்னோடு இருக்கேயுது. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. தொகத்தை வீட்டு பிரிந்தீச் ஒடனநடப்போ. தொகத்தை வீட்டு பிரிந்தீச் ஒடனநடப்போ. பிரிப்பா ஜீவிப்பவராய் பரத்தீசெல்வார் வானத்தீ. பிரிப்பா ஜீவிப்பவராய் பரத்தீசெல்வார் வானத்தீ. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. இமை கொழோதில் மாஷ்டப்பட்டு பாரம்சென்றிருவா. இமை கொழோதில் மாஷ்டப்பட்டு பாரம்சென்றிருவா. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. 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 நித்தியகார விச்சுவோட் செந்து வாழுவோ. நித்தியகார விச்சுவோட் செந்து வாழுவோ. இத்தரியையாசித்திரு கிருஸ்து ஒடு வாழுவோ. இத்தரியையாசித்திரு கிருஸ்து ஒடு வாழுவோ. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. சுதந்தரித்து கொள்ளுவார்கள் எல்லாவற்ற யுமி. சுதந்தரித்து கொள்ளுவார்கள் எல்லாவற்ற யுமி. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா. ஜயம் கொள்ளுவரை கொண்டுபோகே ஜய கிருஸ்து வருகிறா.
431. பாடல் நம்பர் 431. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டைவா. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே 431.
வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. அணாலையில் ஆமினாராய் பருத்தத்தோடே கடிப்பதுமே. அணாலையில் ஆமினாராய் பருத்தத்தோடே கடிப்பதுமே. வந்தவன் க்வாதம் சரணடைத்தான் ஆடித்து சூழை சேத்தின்புற்றா வருவா. நிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. கட்டின வீளம் நிலம் போரோலோ அண்டிடம் மோட்சாரு உணவினரோ. கட்டின வீளம் நிலம் போரோலோ அண்டிடம் மோட்சாரு உணவினரோ. உணுவிட்டு ஒன்றாவின் போனா குடவுணோடு வருவது. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. அழகுமாயி நீலக்கிறாரே. அந்தத்தும் நீலே மிருந்திராரே. அழகுமாயி நீலக்கிறாரே. அநைசமாதி வருதினே. மரணவோதாசல் இறுப்பே. அரபாவே சில்லாதவரே. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. வாணத்திற்கீரே பூமிவேலே. வாணவர் ஏசு நாமமல்லான். வாணத்திற்கீரே பூமிவேலே. வாணவர் ஏசு நாமமல்லான். நக்சிங்கபறைய வழியில்லை. நக்சகரேசு வழியமலை. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. திறாத பாவம் பியாதியெயோ. ஆராத உண்டென் தெலவினமோ. திறாத பாவம் பியாதியெயோ. ஆராத உண்டென் தெலவினமோ. தோறக்குரூத்தே உமதுகித்தான் தாயில்னெலானி குணமடைய. வருவாய்த் தருணமிதுவே அழைக்கிறாரே. வல்லாண்டவர் ஏசுவண்டை. The Lord Jesus Christ is speaking. I am a silver knight with my sword I am a silver knight The Lord Jesus Christ is speaking. I am a silver knight with my sword 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 I am a silver knight I am a silver knight with my sword I am a silver knight The Lord Jesus Christ is speaking. I am a silver knight with my sword I am a silver knight The Lord Jesus Christ is speaking.
Let us hear the prayer.
Loving greetings in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
In the name of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
In the name of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
We thank the Lord once again. He has given us this opportunity to spend some quality time in his presence.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And we want to utilize every moment of this grace he has granted unto us this evening.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
We don't want to take this time for granted.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Every opportunity the Lord extends to us or gives to us, he gives it with a plan and a purpose for each and every one of our benefit.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And I believe he does everything according to his plan he has for us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
He will not do anything half-assedly.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Our Lord is not an author of confusion.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
But Lord is very keen to take us out of any and all confusions.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
So before we look to the world, let us once again look to the Lord.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Let us pray.
Let us pray.
Dear Lord, with hearts full of thanksgiving and praises, here we are in your presence once again.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
To find help in the time of need like this.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
We are needy people and you only can supply all that we need.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
We lifted our eyes into the hills from where cometh our help.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Our help cometh from the one who is the maker and the creator of the universe.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
So Lord, we just look to thee.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
With hearts full of longing and desiring from you the very best.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Thou mindestest yourself unto us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Break thou the bread of life, O Lord.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Dear Lord, we pray that thou reveal yourself.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Reveal the things which are in your book, the Bible.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And thus make our gathering so fruitful.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Bless us as we may speak and as we translate and as we hear your word, you may be glorified.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
With much thanksgiving in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Amen. The burden this evening I have in my heart is regarding faith.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In our Christian lifetime, we might have heard a lot about faith.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Such sensitive matter and crucial matter for each and every believer that we must pay attention, close attention whenever the word faith is mentioned.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us. In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us. In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
We always admire those who are mentioned in Hebrews chapter 11.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Heroes of faith are mentioned there.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
They are called the heroes of faith.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
We also don't want to find ourselves zero in faith.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Yesterday, we were looking at this scripture portion which tells, "By grace you have been saved through faith."
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
So in the very beginning of our Christian life, faith is so important.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
One way or another, Lord led our hearts and our minds to have faith in the Lord.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And that is why when we are born again, we are called household of faith.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Yes, we are born of his spirit with life from above into God's family divine.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
But this family divine is also called household of faith.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And if we are the household of faith, we should not have household gods.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
As we were singing that song about being overcomers.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Those who will be overcomers, they will go.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
How one can become overcomer?
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
But even before looking at this matter, how to be overcomers, we must know for sure what things or whom we should overcome.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
If we don't have the idea what we must overcome, how we can overcome?
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And there are many things, even now, we have not recognized that we must overcome in these areas.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
We know that we must overcome the enemy, the Satan, the devil.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Lord has already defeated him.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
He is the defeated foe.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
He is a roaring lion.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
But Lord has already taught us how we can overcome this devil.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
We should always remember the example or remember the example Lord has given before us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
As after being baptized, Lord came out from the waters of baptism.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Holy Spirit came upon him and rested upon him.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And it is written that he was led by the Spirit, with capital S, into the wilderness to be tempted.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And we know how the Lord overcame all these temptations from the enemy.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Our Lord started telling, "It is written, it is written."
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Easiest way to defeat or overcome the Satan is by using the word of God, which is two-edged sword.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And Satan is the prince of this air.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And Bible has enough provision for our well-being that we can combat or we can stand against the voices of the enemy.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
By faith, when we use the scriptures, we can definitely defeat the enemy.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Scripture tells, "That which is not of faith is sin."
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Even in using the simple scriptures, simplest scriptures, we need faith to activate the power there is in the scriptures.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
But the second most important area in which we all must overcome.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Is the world.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
We must overcome world.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And when we are talking about world, world has so many things against us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Many, many things which are in the world, we must overcome.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
And so how we can overcome the world and the things in this world?
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Scriptures has the answer.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Scripture tells, "Faith is the victory which has overcome the world."
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
Would you please turn with me to first John?
First John.
First John, chapter 5, and we will read verse 4.
First John, chapter 5, and we will read verse 4. Dear God, let us pray.
Dear God, let us pray.
So faith is such a powerful matter with which we can all together defeat the things which are in the world.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
In the presence of the Lord, we pray that he can help us.
A small testimony of mine.
My dear friend.
My little friend.
When we went as a family to USA.
To USA.
To America.
I could not find right job appropriate to my education.
To my education.
To my education.
Wherever I went and applied, they used to tell me, "You are overqualified."
To my education. To my education.
To my education. To my education.
I said, "Yes, I may be overqualified, but I need a work."
To my education.
To my education.
And for one and a half year, I worked in that Jewish institution.
To my education.
To my education.
I was joyfully working in that institution, joyfully.
To my education.
To my education.
Every day I will go thirty minutes walking distance at my workplace and then will come back thirty minutes walking also.
To my education.
To my education.
I was so much thankful to the Lord for providing that work for me.
I was so much thankful to the Lord for providing that work for me. And there came a time where my boss called me and told, Mister Palmer, we must let you go from this work because some Jewish girls are coming from Russia. And so my boss ended up giving me the salary of that week and let me go. As I came out from his office and was walking back to my home on the streets. I started raising my hands and singing songs of thanksgiving to the Lord. I was so happy and so much thankful to the Lord. In USA, whenever this kind of situation may come in anyone's life, they will be so much frustrated. Now what I will do, what will happen to me and my family? People will be emotionally overwhelmed when they hear this kind of news that they have lost their job. But in my case, it was altogether different story. Even though I was overqualified and that was not the appropriate work and yet I took that position, that job by faith. But now the same faith was coming alive in me and I was praising and thanking the Lord even for the loss of my job. I steadfastly knew this that as the Lord has closed this one door, he is going to open even greater or better door for me. And this unemployment lasted for four months. In USA, brand new family, four months of unemployment is not an easy thing. But as we continued exercising our faith and walking with our Lord Jesus, Lord did wonderful things. As we are talking about faith, but those four months, we tested the faithfulness of the Lord. Even though we may be found lacking in our faith, he remains faithful. And this testimony is really, really very long and I must tell that we could overcome this world by having the faith. Me and my wife don't remember a single day where we were downcast or troubled in our faith. And then the Lord indeed opened a great door for us. And that gave us great opportunities financially speaking and time wise because I was, I became my own boss. With very little efforts, only I used to work sincerely for my work only three days and rest of the four days, me and my wife will go in all five boroughs of New York and preach the gospel. Faith is the victory which has overcome the world and all things which are in the world. And that is why Lord put lots and lots of emphasis on this matter of faith. Lord Jesus was very harsh or hard at his disciples when it came to faith. He started telling his disciples, oh man of little faith. He started telling them, where is your faith? Means you have misplaced your faith. And whenever he saw faith, he started telling, what a great faith. He started telling, let it be according to your faith. And then he was about to finish his ministry on this earth. Lord Jesus started telling, when I will return, shall I find faith? Because the time is coming where enemy, the devil is going to do certain works in this world that people will not find importance of faith in their lives. I was always telling in regards with USA, but now believers here itself in India are sailing in the same boat. Believers have become wealthy or well settled or well-to-do. In the family, two or three persons are working. Not just working, but with handsome salary, they are working. And they have great bank balances. They have insurance like a life insurance and health insurance. And they have some money in CD and other ways, different things. Children have gone abroad and they are studying. And there is no area in which they have a need of exercising their faith. When they are sick, they go to the hospital or to the doctor. If they have a need of surgery, they say, oh, no problem, I have insurance. Even if I ask you now, tell me one or two areas in which you need faith, then you may scratch your head. But in his sovereign wisdom and in his grace and mercy towards us, he has kept one or two very crucial areas in which we must exercise our faith. As parents, we ourselves have experienced this and those of you who are parents, they are also exercising their faith in one area for their son or daughter's marriage. And we are thankful to the Lord that Lord has given us few areas that we cannot but cast ourselves on the Lord and have faith in the Lord for the well-being of our children. And even the disciples found that there is a great need for faith in their lives, they started asking the Lord, Lord, increase our faith. Turn with me to Luke chapter seventeen and we will read verse five. Luke chapter seventeen and we will read verse five that we read, and the apostles said unto the Lord, increase our faith. And this is the drastic, dramatic kind of change in their, what they call rank in the sight of the Lord. Immediately, we see here, all of a sudden, we see here, this disciples, the scripture is calling them apostles. We may be a newly born again believer or we may have become dickens or elder or preacher or prophet or whatsoever. There is for each and every one of us a need for faith. And even, we should even pray to the Lord, Lord, increase our faith. But we all know very clearly, according to his foreknowledge, he has given us a measure of faith already. It is not the measure of faith is important. It may be, but yet at this point, we must consider this, that it's not the measure of faith which is important, but whether or not we exercise that faith which is given to us is important. And that is why living and active faith is of great importance. We used to have a T-shirt in USA with this kind of writing, exercise your faith, walk with Jesus. As we have started walking with the Lord Jesus, there is no way to continue walking with him without exercising our faith. We must walk by faith and not by sight. And then let us read verse six also. Luke sixteen, verse six. And the Lord said, if you had faith as a grain of mustard seed, you might say unto this sick mine tree, be thou picked up from roots and be cast into the sea and it will obey. Here we see disciples who were called now apostles were requesting the Lord, please increase our faith and the Lord is answering them in different way. Here we see disciples who were called now apostles were requesting the Lord, "Please increase our faith," and the Lord is answering them in different way.
Apostlaragi, avrathile sishargal, engal visvasathai vartikappana veendum enthu kettai kariyathirke vityasamaga badhilalikkiradhi parkiro.
Ikada aana shishulu, apostulu, prabha maaku visvasanu vuddikalugandu manjepadiginabudu, prabani eswakristu chenneti jawabu veeruka undradhi.
Lord is telling, "If you have a faith like a mustard seed, you will command this sick mind tree."
Kadugalavu visvasam ungalukke unda irundhal, kaatathi marathirke niigal soliveeragal.
Meru aavaginja antha visvasakalavaarey, ee kambal cheddu chochi, meru chepnattalaidhi.
This sick mind tree has its own significance.
Indha kaatathi marathirke orukudamundhi.
Ee kambal chedduko koralakshmi manadi.
This sick mind tree is not, not at all, sycamore tree. Sycamore tree and sick mind tree is different.
Indha kaatathi maram, ide matta aththi marathai kaatilam vityasamaga irukradhi.
Ee kambal cheddu, meetha chedlu kante vityasamannadi kaundunradhi.
Sycamore tree is that where Zechias went up to see the Lord Jesus.
Sakayu eyrinan, andhak marathai kaatilum, indha maram vityasamaga irukradhi.
Mari jakaya ekranne meeldu cheddu kante kuda, ee cheddu vityasamga undunradhi.
Sick mind tree is well-known for its root system.
Kaatathi maram thannu dey veergalukke pugalpetradhi.
Adhi thane veerlantho loopari prakuntundhi.
If the tree is this big, the root system will also the same size.
Andhak maram ivudamaga kaanappadukradhi, andhak alavilai, adhurunni veergalum kaanappadum.
Aacheddu yantaga yathigamundundho, thane veerlu antha loopala rothiga prakuntai.
Lord was telling that this sick mind tree is well-known to make the coffin boxes.
Indha kaatathi marathai kondu savapetti sayivaragal.
Ee yoka cheddu chetta mari savanipetadu pettill thayar cheshtaru.
And this casket or the coffin box is related with our death.
Indha savapetti namudiyae maranathikka, namudiyae maranathai kurikkiradhi.
Ee yoka savapetti manaka maranath chuchustundhi.
And Lord was teaching them that certain things in our life, we must get rid of.
Orusilai kariyathai namudiyae varkilirundhi velakkavendum enthu kachikodukradhi.
Mari deeridwaraprabani eswakrista yajnirpithurundhi, kunni kariyamalukku meeru maranath chalidu.
Unforgiveness, jealousy, and this kind of things remains in our life for lifetime.
Mannekkai mudiyadha kariyae porame, namudiyae varnal muluvudum namodekku da varugiradhi.
Yoka dhyaeshamu, macharamu, poopamu, chempamupadu kariyamalu, manajivathal vambadusthira unduvi.
People die having this kind of grudges and this kind of bad feelings towards others up to the last moment on this earth.
Ivedamane gunangalode, kadeisi nalmatum irundhi avergal marikkirargal.
Anekamandhi ilanand gunalakshmi lakaliggi, antumvarukku kariggi, chivraga var maranath.
They don't want to forgive others, they don't want to give up on this kind of grudges.
Indha kariyathai manneka mudiyadha nelamayile, avalai meel, ulle kovathai, vidamudiyadha nillile kaanappadukradhi.
Varu medhunna poopani marakunda, varu chempampunandu paristhalor kaanappadutunaru.
And this was in regards with when Peter started asking, "How many times I must forgive my brother?"
Pedhre ivudamaga kettikiran, ettanai thanave naan ennu dey sagodranai manneka veendum.
Prabani eswakristu chochi, Pedhre aduthunadu, prabha, naa sagodru tapu cheshte, innisaray naan cheminsala.
He started asking, "Lord, must I forgive my brother seven times?"
Andavare naan ennu dey sagodranai, yedharam manneka veendumo.
Prabha, naa sagodru tapu cheshte, yedh saray cheminsala.
Lord ended up telling him, "Not seven times, seventy times seven."
Yedh, taravi, matramala, yedhuvathu taravi, yedh, yedhuvathu taravi, nee manneka veendum enthu soligar.
Sabati prabani eswakristu chepadu, yedh saray kaadaya, yedh deppadu saradu, deppu cheminsalidu.
And the answer was, "It is impossible, how one can do it?"
Ivedamaga ide naam kanakkuvayitu koluvathu.
Ide, ee lakka chayaladu, ma chala kastha.
So here to answer Peter, this was the answer. Lord says, "Like sick mind tree, this kind of matters, unforgiveness, jealousy, bitterness, and all those things will remain until we die, but by faith you can break that curse."
Andavare ivudamaga Pedhrevukke solitirigara, indha vairakyamana gunam manneka mudiyadha, indha kariyam kaatathi marathai pole, kaanappadukra, indha kariyathai visvasathinal, nee tuukkiyerealam enthu solitirigara.
Sabati prabani eswakristu Pedhre chepnadu, neelundhi, varu yoka chempampulandri dhyaeshamu, macharamu, prothamu prathipayi cheddu kariyamu, yoka visvasa, adhi meedh cheddule, katino kaunabadu kuda, yoka visvasanduvara, daanidnu tisayochu.
In other place, Lord also told, "If you command this mountain and it must move."
Indha malake niigal soliveeragal, adhi veerathile sellum enthu innoru vasanathile soligara.
Oka sadhan chepnadu, ee konda prakalimpa padhi samdharan veepadu kaakannu chepnathite, avdiga sambichadu.
All the hindrances coming in our way and obstacles and hurdles, all those things can be removed as we exercise, as we pray with faith.
Naam jabikumoridhi visvasathode, jabikumoridhi visvasathai payitvikumoridhi, namak munbaga tanayana kariyangal ellam aganchupodum.
Manu visvasandu to pradhin cheshtappudu, manu vedukulundi abhyantunbu, yalan katino mani kariyani kuda toligipodu.
But when it comes to this kind of sensitive matters which may linger in our life and ruin our life, our attitude and all the things because of this grudges and this unforgiveness, it will ruin our life in this kind of area, if you want to overcome, you need this faith.
Namudiyae gunadhisayengal, namudiyae ivudamaga ninikravu gunangal, namai par segru, indha gunangalile naam vudhalai para veendum aanal, indha visvasathai payitvikumoridhi, idhalirundhi naam vudhalai para mudiyum.
Manajanma sobavu kunnadu, practice samanakunti, ee gunalakshmi lu, mari yoka dhyaeshamalu, macharamalu, prothamalu, mari manalulu toligipolantti, adhi visvasanduvaran saadyam.
So after looking at this very sensitive and practical matter, what we study in the Bible study is not for our mental knowledge or mental exercise, but we must put what the Lord teaches us into practice, day-to-day practice.
Ide naam terindukolvathu, paditukolvathu, dyanipathu, edarkagaenjal, namudiyae arivukaga, alla, oburunalam, naam visvasathai payitvikka kachikolavendum.
Entukku veeetman dyanustunamu, veeetman poostunamantti, yedhoma lakabuddhi, nyanam, adhikankaavulukkaaligadi, anidinamu manaka visvasanu abhyasana chesi, manaka visvasal vuddichendunattalu.
And this matter of faith, we must keep it for all the days of our time.
Namudiyae varnal muluvudum, indha visvasa kariyathai naam payitvikavendum.
Manajivathal antumvarukku yoka visvasanman abhyasana chayvalidu.
Paul is telling to Timothy in the second Timothy, chapter four, verse seven.
Rande timothayu, nandham adigaram, yedham vasanathile, paul apostelan ivudamaga soligiraa.
Rande timothi, nalgu yeddu, apostelan, paul yudhika chepnadu.
Second Timothy four, seven.
Rande timothayu, nandham adigaram, yedham vasanam.
Rande timothi, nalgu yedu.
He says, "I have kept the faith."
Naan visvasathai kaathukundee.
Neenu visvasanu kaapadukundine.
We need this faith even in the end stage of our life.
Indha visvasam kadeisi mattumaga namode irukavendum.
Manu antu jivathulokodaayaka visvasam manaka avasamannadi.
And when the Lord has given us this faith, that faith must be tried.
Indha visvasathai namak koduttrikrare, ide naam payitvikavendum.
Devu manaka visvasan, ichini visvasan, manabhyasana chayvalidu.
And we should not be afraid of when our faith is tried.
Indha visvasam payitchi sayambodhu, naam bayanduvidda koodaadi.
Yoka visvasan abhyasana cheshtappudu, manu bayapadukodu.
Whenever our faith is tried, we must triumph.
Namudiyae visvasam sodanai kullaakappadumoridhi, naam jayathai petchukuliduro.
Mari yoka prabhu manaku visvasan parichinchayabudu, manan daanivutthu unduvalidu.
The scripture tells, "The trial of your faith is more precious than the gold tried in fire."
Indha visvasamadhi payitvikapadumboridhi, adhi vilayera pachadai, maari vidakradhi, ivudamaga akkini sodikappadukradhi, avudamaga niigal sodikappadukiridhi.
Kabati yedanga manasinchupovunadu, bangarmu, akknichatha, mari sodhimpatundu, yoka visvasamada, mari prabhu avdiga sodhinchupadayappudu, mir daanivukavunduvalidu.
Remember Daniel and his three friends.
Daniel, avrathile moonje nanbiragali ninithukollingal.
Saichesi, Danielidu, aaka mukkudusne, neethu, nyapun chesukundhi.
They lived by faith in the foreign land.
Annye nilathile visvasathode varindavargal.
Varu visvasandu, annye dhyaeshamalu, jivinchinavaru.
And when the time came that their faith may must be tried.
Andhak avrathile visvasam sodikappadumudiyana, andhak veela vendabodhu.
Varaka jivathaloo visvasamu sodhimpa padha samay vachinappudu.
Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego end up telling to the king, "O king, even though our Lord may not rescue us, we are not going to bow down before the statue you have created."
Oruvalai andavar engalai tapuvikavittalo, nee seyivitha indha silai, naangal panindukolvathilai enthu, Shadrach, Meshach, Abednego, avrathile sonnargal.
Mari Shadrach, Meshach, Abednego, yendiparu, "O raja, ma devu yoka aknoninni, mamal tapinthukpoena sare, nee u nilpattu graanikki, meel saagil padamu."
Our faith must be tried.
Namudiyae visvasam sodikappadavendum.
Manaka visvasam sodhimpa padavalu.
We have this song in USA and also in the Sunday School here, which goes like this, "Dare to be a Daniel, dare to stand alone, dare to have a purpose formed, dare to make it known."
Daniel, ivudamaga Sunday School le oru paadal undhi, USA le oru paadal undhi, Danielai pole, nirkum dayiramaga, nirkum badiyaga, naa enni seyivendum enthu solumudiyana the paadal.
Mari Amerikaanu Sunday School pillaloga paadupattaru, prabha, Daniel valen, daanivukavunadu chaymane, paadiettu kapaata.
By faith, we must purpose in our heart that we will not defile ourselves by the things which are in the world or of the world.
Indha ulagathile, ulagatha, ulagathile undana kariyangal mulamaga naan tittupadakoodaadi enthu ennavendum.
Kaitha ee lokakaran chetta, nanunana apyattapattukona koodu, aneattundi, talampu manak kaligundvalidu.
And when we purpose such a thing in our heart, we must be ready and willing and more than willing to suffer the consequences following that.
Ivedamaga naam, namudiyae irudethai kaathukulumoridhi, adhurunni kariyangal namipintodarundu varum.
Mari yedanga manamu, maaka, manan jivachabudu, mari manaku veduraiyidhi, anek kariyaluchanpada, manan daanivukkaligundvalidu.
But this song goes one step further.
Indha paadal, innum adutha oru padhi meele seligiradhi.
Yoka paadangko, mettumundukpottundhi.
By faith, you don't just have to purpose in your heart, but now you must make it known to your friends, your family, your neighbors, and all those who are there in the world.
Indha visvasathai kondu ungaldey irudethile thirmanam mattum seidavanai alla, ide matavilakke, ungaldey nanbirakke, nee solavendum.
Mari yoka visvasandu to nu chesnunadu, nee thirmanamunyaka visvasan, nee udhyashamunyila unchukakodu, adhi nee porugvaru to, nee stethu, italatupanchukavalidu.
By faith, we must proclaim and declare and shout it out from the rooftop even, what we have believed in our heart, we are now declaring by faith.
Indha visvasathai naam namudiyae manathile kondarulaga matramala, naam anga meele ninju, indha visvasathai urakkasululaga kaanappadavendum.
Yoka visvasandu namina kariyalu manalulu unchukundu matramagaadu, manu lechi nilpattu bikkaragada, netalatupatunadu.
The scripture tells very clearly, loud and clear, "Without faith, it is impossible to please God."
Visvasam illamal devanakke priyamai irupadhi koodaadi kariyam enthu vedam telivaga soligradhi.
Devu vaakken meen chalusundhi, visvasam lekunda, devu kishulaga unnadu asadiyamu.
And we all have experienced and we have exercised our faith many times in our life.
Ivedamaga namudiyae varkilay, anegantaram, indha visvasathai naam payitviththi vandirikrum.
Kabati manan jivathalokatakaramalu, yoka visvasanu, anekasandhramullo, manan abhyasana chesuntunavu.
It is the desire that we should not stop using our faith in few things here and there and then stop.
Andu dey vanjay, oru visvasathai, indhum, anghum, avidamaga payitvikada badikke, murumayaga payitvikavendum.
Devu nekka udhyashamunyadu enthi, aanam manaka visvasanu, appudappudu, akkalaakal abhyasana chaykavukkali, ani paristhal antumvarukku, daanam mani abhyasana chesavare kundvalidu.
But we must be those who may go from faith to faith.
Visvasathilirundhi, visvasathirke, seligarula irukavendum.
Visvasandu, visvasandu daatipoyavareka unduvalidu.
Turn with me to this scripture portion, James, chapter one, verse three.
Yakob onjam adigaram, mungjam vasanam.
Yakob padrika, moodavadyaymu, madhuti vachilam.
It talks about the trial of the faith. One, three, one, three.
Yakob onjam adigaram, mungjam vasanam.
May Yakob padrika, vaghatti moodu.
Ungal visvasathin parichiyanadhi, purumai undakumenchu, arindhi, adhi nigundhi, sandoshamaga enngal.
Sahodhilara, me visvasankalu parichya oarpu puttichinaregi, meru naanavu sodhapanabudu, adhi mahaaanandamani antikunadi.
So when we find the Lord faithful in small matters.
Namudiyae siriyae kariyangalile, naam unmayay visvasamay irukumpachathile.
Mari chinnachinnakariyamalu, manu visvasandu to unnapudu.
He will lead us in the bigger matters.
Avar periyae kariyangalai namudithile kodupar.
Aana gopakariyamalukki, manan nadupistadu.
And then he will take us in the higher ground and will desire from us to have faith in a greater measure.
Ivedamaga periyae idathirke namai kondusendru, anga indha visvasathai payitvikumadiyaga sayvara.
Ninkka unuttamanas thaanandikal, manupichchi, akkalaakal yoka visvasanu abhyasana chennetika cheshtadu.
The most important area in our life where we must use or exercise our faith is our prayer life.
Namudiyae javavarkile, indha visvasa payitchi kaanappadavendum.
Chala pramikumene karimpanantti, manaprathna jivathalu, yoka visvasanman abhyasana chayvalidu.
Prayer is not just asking and asking and asking to the Lord for something.
Javam enbadhi, andu dey kettu, 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 ivudamaga pogire kariyam alla.
Pradhin chepnabudu, prabhu naadukkotta, adukkotta, adukkottakvathakkaadu.
And many believers has this definition, prayer means asking from the Lord.
Palav visvasigal ivudamaga ninithukulidhargal, javam enjal, andu dey kettadhi.
Mari anek visvasinana talustnaru, pradhinante, prabhu naadukkotta.
But today I will mention one thing you must implement when you go in your closet for prayer.
Niigal javathirke sellumboridhi, niigal sayivendiyae oru kariyathai soligreen kielngal.
Prabhu, mari pradhin cheshtappudu, me chescho yoka kariyan chepkanvindhi.
Brother Baxing has spoken so much about this, he is a prayer-hearing God and prayer answering God.
Avar javathai kettu, javathirke badhalalikkiravar, enthu soli sagodrar Baxing, avergal adikkadi soluvar.
Daiv said, "Baxingaru pradhin cheshtappudu, aana upuyakchamatlanantenti, pradhin aalakinchaydeva, pradhin jawabichaydeva" and sambojistadu.
So we must know the definition or what makes the prayer true prayer is very important.
Ivedamane unmayana javam kaanappadukradhi enbadai naam purindukolavendum.
Kabati nijumayana pradhin eemtenne, manak grahinchavalidu.
Lord has given many promises to us.
Andavare aneg vaakthathangalai koduttrikra.
Devu manaka aneka vaakdhanalichadu.
Brother Baxing has taught us also his prayer, his promise giving God and his promise keeping God.
Sagodrar Baxing avergal ivudamaga soluvargal, vaakthathathai koduthu, vaakthathathai niraveetchigra devan.
Mari daiv said, "Nukka kamaatupesadu, vaakdhan chesha deva, vaakdhan niravechha deva."
Prayer is the time where we must claim the promises he has given in his word.
Indha vaathin mulamaga kodukappatta vaakthathathai urumeekorunneramaga, javaneram kaanappadukradhi.
Devu lekanubagamalu, manu chesinavaakdhanani, prabha maapattanuvanchamani, manu chesse pradhinaka unduvalidu.
Not just claiming those promises, but by faith proclaim these promises to us, one to another, and to the uncertain forces of darkness out there. and to the uncertain forces of darkness out there.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
When the enemy will rage war against us, we must loudly proclaim, "My Lord has promised me this."
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
So by faith, by using faith, we must proclaim these promises even one to another.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
So faith is the victory which has overcome the world.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Just tonight when you go home or during this week whenever you have a chance, just write five areas or five problems or five temptations you faced and when you use the faith, you could overcome.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
And we must testify before others that yes, Lord had counted my faith so precious and he has helped me.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
The opposite thing of faith is fear.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
We have noticed during this pandemic, most of the people died not because of the disease but the fear.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Last year, we spent seven months in Gujarat state while COVID was on the pick.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
We ourselves shut up ourselves in the apartment.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
We came in April.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
And for two months we were in the apartment.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
And on the phone, we started talking to Hindus and Muslims and started praying with them and counseling them and also sharing the gospel with them.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
And we were diligent in this one matter, increasing their faith and pointing their eyes towards the Lord Jesus.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
We must combat and bind the powers of this fear with the faith.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
And we must ask the Lord, "Lord, increase our faith."
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
We must tell the Lord, "Lord, help me to apply the faith which you have given to me in all the circumstances, not just few, all the circumstances of my life."
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Lord wants to call each and every one of us his friend.
If we call each and every one of us his friend.
As Abraham exercised his faith and by faith he sacrificed his son Isaac, then Lord started calling him his friend.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Last thing and I must close.
Last thing and I must close.
As Abraham was asked by the Lord to sacrifice his son.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
He went on for three days' journey.
If he went on for three days' journey.
Every step of the way to Mount Moriah, he had to exercise his faith.
If he went on for three days' journey.
And when the time came at certain point, he started telling the young people, "You stay here and me and my son will go yonder and worship the Lord and come back."
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
He was willing and more than willing to sacrifice his son.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
If we want to bring true worship to the Lord, as he has asked, "Who wants to worship me? Must worship in spirit and reality."
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful. These three things must remain together.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Sacrifice and faith and worship stays or must stay together.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
If we want to please the Lord, we must have sacrificial living and sacrificial giving.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
But it all starts with faith.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Without faith, you cannot have sacrificial living and sacrificial giving.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
May the Lord help us to understand the importance of faith in each and every one of life.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Let us pray.
Let us pray.
Have a gracious Lord and loving heavenly Father. We give thee thanks and praise.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Dear Lord, we thank thee for saving us by grace through faith.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Lord, help us to exercise your faith and walk with Jesus.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
There is no need of walking by sight anymore as a believer.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
For you have already equipped us with your faith.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
You are the author of faith. You are the author and the finisher of our faith.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Father, lead us on on this path of faith.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
That no longer, not only we may have a step of faith.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
But when the time may come, we may have a leap of faith.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
And like those heroes of faith, we may also exercise our faith no matter what may be the outcome.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Dear Lord, we thank you for giving us your presence.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Seal these words upon our hearts.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
That through this, manifold fruits may be produced in our life.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
And as we exercise our faith, you be greatly glorified.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
With much thanksgiving in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray.
If we try our faith, we must be faithful.
Amen.
Today we have heard about the Lord Jesus Christ. We have read 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 about the Lord Jesus Christ. From 3:30 sisters meeting, 3:30. We have heard about the Lord Jesus Christ. From 6:30 gospel meeting, 4:00. We have heard about the Lord Jesus Christ. We have heard about the Lord Jesus Christ. We have heard about the Lord Jesus Christ. Good Lord, we pray to you. Good Lord, we pray to you. Good Lord, increase our faith. Good Lord, increase our faith. Good Lord, we pray to you. Good Lord, increase our faith. Good Lord, increase our faith. And without faith, it is impossible to pleasing you, Lord. Without faith. Good Lord, increase our faith. Good Lord, pray to Paul. Good Lord, assure us. Good Lord, trust us. Good Lord, I kept my faith. Good Lord, pray to you. Good Lord, do you believe? Good Lord, where is your faith? Good Lord, where is your faith? Good Lord, pray to you. Without faith, it is impossible to please you, Lord. Good Lord, pray to you. Good Lord, pray to you. Good Lord, pray to you. Amen. Good Lord, pray to you. Amen.